Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the May 15 Quincy Planning Board Hearing. I will start by taking roll call.
Ali Shaughnessy present.
John Kelly present. Larry Luzzo present.
Kimberly Bealyn present.
Christopher Mead present.
PJ Foley present.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The Board requests that you please be courteous to the proceedings and turn off your cellphones. The Planning Board reserves the right to administer oaths, summon witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examine a person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject site or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing for cause. The order of business will be announced by me. All questions will be directed through me. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition. When recognized, please stand, state your name and address, specific interests in the proceedings, and special credentials, if any pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing on the matter. The hearing is being taped for the public record. The Planning Board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. The first item on tonight's agenda is a continued public hearing, 24 to 26 Frank Street, Planning Board Case Number 2024-04.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Austin Realty. This matter is actually, we're requesting a continuance until the June 26 hearing date. We continue to work on some items that were raised by both the DPW and the peer review consultant. We need some additional time to do so. Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to June 26.
Second best.
Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for 10 Independence Avenue, Planning Board Case Number 2024-01. Attorney Foley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Patrick Foley. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. Business address, 265 Willard Street in Quincy. Joined here today by Chi Man, who's our civil engineer for the project, and Alida Alba, who's our architect. The property we're here to discuss tonight is at 10 Independence Avenue, which is located in the business A zoning district of the city. Just for the record, that will convert over to residential B zoning. The Franklin Street Independence Ave corridor seems quite a facelift over the last few years. It's not up on 9 Franklin. There's a development up there, right next door to Ladies' Pub, which started to look a little rundown there at the end, and they put in a nice sit-down sandwich shop, Hungry Tummy, in there. Next door, Dunkin' Donuts. They moved over next door. They widened the drive-through, which they did to try to get some cars off the street and improve the traffic. Across the street, you had dilapidated four-family home and a smoke shop, which was replaced by a six-unit building and two commercial spots. I even think the barber shop next door was doing something with their property as well. Hopefully, with this development here right now, which is on an auto body, there's an auto body repair shop there, hopefully we're able to improve the look of that corner as well. We presented back in the month of February. Over that course of time, we've made some changes to the project. We had an additional community meeting. I'm just gonna go over the changes that we made, and then I'm gonna have the team come up and actually go over them in a little bit more detail. The big change that we made is the project will now have no commercial spot to it. It will just be the nine residential units. These will be condos, not apartments, so it'll be owner-occupied, two bedrooms. They'll have 21 parking spots. So what we were able to do by eliminating the commercial with the nine units and the 21 spots, we were able to get rid of the parking barriers that we're gonna need when we go to the zoning board at some point. We also got rid of two parking spots as well. The two parking spots that people brought to our attention that were a safety hazard were the ones that access Franklin Street, so we were able to eliminate those. We're gonna use that space now for extra storage. We're also going to use that for bike racks, just to imagine the type of person that we're gonna attract with this building, having two train stations, Quincy Adams and Quincy Center, in close proximity. There's probably gonna be somebody that's gonna be walking and biking and using public transportation quite frequently. We've also pulled the building back two feet, which will allow for more green space and some trees, which we were told that we should add. That's just some of the changes that we did. I'm gonna have Alida and Chi come up and just go over them in a little more detail.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Chi Man, Harry Man, Design Group, civil engineer on this project. So the changes on this rendition compared to the last submissions, the site-wise, it's not that much changes. I can highlight some of the changes on the site plan. As Attorney Foley mentioned, we got away of two parkings, so we make the, we have room to make more landscaping on-site. Because of the downsizing of the building, we got rid of the transformer on the site. We are confident we can get a post-mounted transformer for only nine residential units. So that enabled us to get some additional green space in the parking lot. We have responded to all the peer review and city engineer comments, and we have certified all of their technical comments in regard to stormwater, site access, and so forth, and all the utility connection as such. There is a late comment from traffic and parking yesterday. I didn't have a chance to respond in advance to the meeting. I did email to the planning department, but I have some copies. Just really minor changes.
Thank you.
There are some concerns about a couple parking spots that are really tight together, so we are able to just adjust the curb line and make those full-size nine-by-18 parking spaces, especially the number two, number three, and 1213, where they have the angle with the landscape island in between, so we just shifted a couple feet over. We'll be able to make sure they are the full-size nine-by-18 parking spot. Also, the traffic engineer has concern about the sidewalk width, where the tree pit is proposed. The current layout, we have all the sidewalk between the tree pit and the back of sidewalk more than 40 inches, which meet all the ADA requirements. And comments about the driveway being 22 feet one-way, it doesn't comply to the design standard of the zoning code, but 22 feet is very moderate driveway for one-way is very common on many other projects and in the urban setting. And consider this a condominium development. Most of the vehicle will be a smaller-sized vehicle. We don't expect very big trucks parking there. So we have very confidence that the maneuver will be pretty satisfied. One question's about the handicap spot on-site. One of them has to be a van space. So on the exhibit, we kind of move it around. We provide a space, I believe it's 15, so we can extend it into the storage area that we have full-size eight-foot-by-eight-by-18 with the eight-by-18 space next to it for the van space for wheelchair access. That actually works better for where the trash locations, moving the trash out as well. And comments about the way we have the IT code using low-rise data for the traffic generation, that this is only a nine unit, so I don't believe using any other data method is gonna change our analysis at all. It's such a small project. Other than that, as far as the site design go, we satisfied with all the city departments at this point, and all the peer review except for the zoning comments, we are going to defer to the zoning board for the zoning belief. Other than that, I think one more thing is about the screening between the commercial space. It's not shown on the plan, but I believe the owner has agreed to put a fence at the parking line in the back, so it'll be additional screening from the development to the market behind. Is there any comments, questions?
I think maybe we'll take the rest of the presentation and do questions at the end. Thank you.
My name's Alida Alba. I'm with Chu &amp; Company, One Buildings Road, Quincy. As Attorney Foley mentioned, this project consists of a four-story residential use building containing nine units and 21 parking spaces. We have made a few changes from the last presentation. I've moved the building back a couple feet to allow for more green area on the front, and also to create some separation from the sidewalk. The commercial space on the first floor is now gone, and we gave that space to one of the units upstairs, one of the residential units upstairs. We also created a bike rack storage area on the right side, you can see there, so all of the units can access to this storage area for bikes. The parking is all located at the front of the building now, because we eliminated those two spaces that were accessed from Franklin Street. So now all the parking spaces are located at the back with access from Independence Ave driving in and then exiting from Franklin Street. Eight of the units are two-bedroom, two-bathroom units, and only one of the units is a three-bedroom unit, and that's because we gave the first-floor area to one of the upper-floor units. So with the increased square footage, we were able to do a three-bedroom unit up there. The building also will be handicap accessible on all levels, as we have an elevator that accesses every floor of the building. The exterior of the building features a traditional residential look with red brick, double-hang windows, and a mansard-style roof with dormers. The exterior of the building has not changed from the previous presentation, so it's the same. Any questions? We have the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No? Any questions? Okay. I do have a couple of questions. So just on the trash storage area, could you just explain what the plan is with that, for that space?
So the trash area, there's a small dumpster here, because it's only nine units, and there's a recycling area over here, recycling space. There's a door, so it's kind of screened, so it's not visible to the parking spaces and the traffic. So I think the trash will drive over here, probably roll out the barrels and the small dumpsters, because the trash is in the next this way.
Okay. And the small dumpster could be pulled out of that doorway? It's small enough? Okay.
And then it'll exit this way.
And then we'll see if we can get that to buy. Actually, that will be access space, not a parking space on the side, so we can modify the entrance. The dumpster can actually roll on the side, make more room from the side.
We can include it.
On-site snow storage? I didn't know if you had a plan for that.
Again, basically, the snow is gonna push the green space along the backside with a very low ground cover, printing material. The snow will be pushed to the green space area, and it's going to be privately managed by a private contractor, and excessive snow is going to have to be moved on the site by private site contractor.
Yeah, I mean, I just imagine if people are parked in the parking spaces, it would be virtually impossible to move it.
No, they're going to be.
I guess it would be south to the green space.
Yeah.
Have to be removed from the site. The other question that I had, I think it was a question I asked last time as well, would be, there's a unit, Joe, can we just see the floor, the unit layout, please? Actually, the next one. I'm sorry, the next. So the unit, unit 203, and I guess would be the units in that stack, it shows an office space there. I would be interested, just personally, in seeing that have a cased opening. I think there would just be some concern that that would be used as an additional sleeping or bedroom space.
Just remove the door?
Well, like, have a cased opening.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any other? Yes, Madam Lee, yes.
Thank you. I'm just thinking back to the February hearing, and I know a few of the comments that were made during the public hearing was the size of the building, so you've set back two feet, right? But the actual size of the building is not reduced at all.
No.
Okay. Okay. And have you gone to zoning yet?
We haven't, no. We're working on it. You guys first.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just curious, are you guys doing any green energy battery charging stations or anything like that? Maybe electric vehicles or any of that?
Well, by the new energy code, when we get to the stage when we hire a mechanical engineer, they normally, in a heat firm, they normally will have two spaces that I think it's required to have 5% of the parking space to be, so they'll have that on their electrical branch shown for EV charger.
And you move, I just think all the whole, I just think about what more car charging stations, because it's common. It's common to ask.
Yes, no, definitely. No, it's a code requirement.
Do you think they do it now when it's opened up?
Yeah. It's actually a code requirement, but now, with the new code.
Thank you.
Just in light, I guess I have one more question. So in light of the concerns about the size of the building, was any consideration given to, I guess, kind of dropping the whole building down? It seems that it's a tall building that's being proposed, four stories. You've now made kind of that one front unit a two-level or two-story unit. Just curious what the reasoning was behind that.
Well, I think we'll still need the parking to make it work for nine units, and you also need space for like the two staircases, the elevator, the lobby. So by the time you have all that, I don't think it's much more space left on the first floor to have three units. So if we did that, then we'd have to go down to the nine units.
Joe, could you just move back to the la, I just wanna understand a, oh. Yeah, so I'm just.
We need this space for the residential lobby and the two staircases and the elevator, but still need more parking. So I think actually what makes it that this space, you have one single unit there, yes, but then you'd be able to accommodate three other units upstairs, because then you end up with, you can make it work, but I mean, it's gonna be less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Does that conclude your presentation for now? Okay. So is there anyone who'd like to speak on this project?
Cindy Brandy.
You just come up to the podium, if you could, and write your name and address. Thank you.
Cindy Brandy. I live at 52 Independence Avenue. This building is too tall. It's too big. This is not a project that's asking for a little grace. It meets 25% of your lot size for nine units. It meets less than 14% of your green space for units. It's a nice-looking building on way too small of a plot. So as you pointed out, a three-story, four-to-six-unit apartment building would probably be a lot better fit than a four-story, nine-unit.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Yes.
We appreciated that we had the community meeting last night. All of us asked that last question that you just asked about the three stories and got crickets. This is a building that is across from the most historical part of our city. It does not reflect, it's not appropriate for, to go two feet back rather than 25 feet back, which is the standard requirement. I think they misunderstood us when we talked about the commercial. We only talked about the commercial in terms of parking, but we universally said that we did not want a three, a four-story building that was right up against the sidewalk. Two feet is negligible. I also had an opportunity to look at the traffic study, and it did not address any sort of pedestrian concerns that we had, and it doesn't address being able to see around the corner when you have something so close to the sidewalk. If they had tried to perhaps have true green space in front of it with, say, reflecting the stone wall that is across the street where the birthplaces are, again, it's a nice-looking building, but this is specifically a place where lots of tourists come to see the birthplaces, and it does, it's too big. And they didn't consider, as we got the crickets last night that you got today, they didn't consider and continue to not consider less units and putting it more appropriate size for the space.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this application? There's, oh, yes, sir.
Richard Sweeney Jr., One Independence Avenue, work address, I live at 20 Houston Road, So here we are, four months or so since our last meeting, and very minor changes. Still nine units, still asking for four stories, and as the other folks have said, four stories is still too high and inappropriate for this historical setting. The style itself, I don't think, is conducive to the neighborhood, a massive dock, brick building. There's really been no effort to appease or address the objections of the neighbors and the National Park Service, which is the focal point of that corner. Again, the building is too large for this size lot. We know by right the developer is entitled to three condominiums on an 11,000-square-foot lot. They want nine. There should be room for compromise here. That proposed two-foot setback, I don't know how many feet it is in the front, but it's just in a very small area of the front, really inconsequential when the rest of the building is right on the sidewalk. And there is concerns about the pedestrians. There's also concerns about the traffic, and the traffic report that I saw was mostly about the driveway and so forth, 22 feet as opposed to it should be 24. Really, nothing said about the intersection itself, where it's a problem. I've been on that corner myself personally for 52 years, and I've seen all kinds of crazy things, accidents, people running the light. You're gonna cut down the vision of the people coming both sides, so I think it's a dangerous intersection that should be addressed. The other question I had in regard to that Ellen Thomas peer review, the general comments contained over 30 significant questions about many items that had not been included or addressed by the developer. Is that still open, or are they all been addressed? I don't know. How's this managed? You know, who takes charge of that? Some of those questions, I thought, were rather simple things for a developer, that they should be considering these things, and they were apparently left out, so I questioned Mr. Foley mentioned some of the other projects down on Franklin Street, that six-unit building with the two commercial spaces in the front. That's great, but it's three stories. So that I hope that you, as members of the Planning Board, would listen to the concerns and the fears of the neighbors and the abuddies who will have to live with this project if it's approved as-is. Three stories, six units, and standard setbacks are not unreasonable requests for those who live and work in this neighborhood. Any benefit of the doubt should lean toward the neighborhood. I would propose to Attorney Foley and his team that there is still room for compromise and negotiation to make this project appealing and acceptable to all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also just mention, as this gentleman comes up, there are sign-in sheets, so you can sign in if you're a pro, against. There are sign sheets just on the windowsills over there as well.
So my name is Claude Zera. I live at 5 Independence Ave. I've been living there for about 10 years now, which is directly across the site. Personally, I just want to voice my opinion. I'm thinking I'm pro this project, you know, compared to what we're looking at now, which is we have a liquor store next to it and a garage filled with old cars pretty much every day. I personally like the idea of this. I just want to kind of voice my opinion as well. Personally, I view this site every day. I don't always, I just wanted to give my opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to, yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, or lady and gentleman, my name is Richard McGinn at 225 Franklin Street. As you can see, most opposed to this project because of the size of the building. It is kind of out of, it would look out of place, and again, being across the street from such a historic thing. But there's also concerns for me personally, would be the parking and the traffic. I take care of an elderly father who has dementia, and he uses stair lifts to get up and down, and getting in and out, and if there were any concerns, there's an old folks' home right up the street from it, and there's fire engines and ambulances in and out of that place all the time due to the fact of its, you know, facility being for older people like my father. Also, there's a young lady of 90 years old that lives next to us, that also is elderly and applying, you know, fire trucks, ambulances, the traffic going in and out of this place already at the light on Franklin Street coming down the hill is already pretty congested. So to add such a big building with multiple vehicles and guests and, you know, it's more like a safety concern, I think, too, for some of the people in the community with all the congestion that we already have and dealing with the parking on Franklin Street. And they said, you know, they were talking about maybe making one side, no parking one side. So which side would that be? Would that be the side with the elderly people that I try to look out after? Or would it be the side with the elderly people, the elderly folks home? So either side, you're removing from elderly people that have been in this community for decades, decades, you know what I mean? So I just want to voice my opinion and be that I'm opposed to the, such a, such a big building. Like everybody said, it looks nice, but to have so many units, it would be more considered to be, you know, not four stories and try to make it a little, little smaller to maybe less congested. And the traffic, and being able to take that turn around the building, you, I won't be able to see what's coming around that corner. I don't know if you guys got x-ray, but I sure don't. So I would say most of the people in the room are opposed to it, and I just want to voice that I'm definitely opposed to it, being so big. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Mary Ann Peake. I'm superintendent of the Adams Birthplaces, a national historic landmark. I'm superintendent of the Adams Birthplaces, a national historic landmark at 133141 Franklin And we have one question to answer tonight. And that question is, what would Abigail Adams think? Okay? What would be her suggestion? Her farm that she called, Oh My Sweet Farm, the farm of the patriot. And visitors, thousands of visitors who come there to see these special places ask, where's the farm? And I tell you that story because it's less than an acre. It's less than a half acre. And yet, this development project is going on a piece of property that's even less than the birthplace's acreage. And when I look at the birthplaces and I wish and hope for, you know, a visitor contact station or parking, I know that's not possible because the site is so small. Yet, you know, buildings such as a four-story, nine-unit condominium is possible on less than an acre. So I look at the spatial impact that this project is going to have, and if you will allow me, I've prepared a few comments that I think are really critical, because your decision with the developer is going to impact us for future generations, for future centuries. And we want it to be right. We have that power and that capability to make the right decision within a historic district within the city of presidents. So keep that in mind when you make your determination. I think, I know Mr. Sweeney made a very good comment. This group is really looking for an opportunity to have a voice, to be considered, and to really make the right and strong decision. Now, this proposed development site at 10 Independence Avenue presents unique challenges to the community that will encompass it. This particular property lies at the intersection of five streets, not just one, five streets facing the Adams Birthplaces, a national historic landmark, and an active residential commercial community. Taking a close look, the garage currently located on the property appears to be in active business and has considerably less impact right now than the four-story, nine condo unit would have with the limited two-feet surround of open space that they propose. Because it's an extremely busy intersection with a national historic landmark that welcomes thousands of visitors each year, a funeral home, a popular restaurant, a large shop and save, and local Miri Lou's Coffee Shop, a Dunkin' Donuts, and more. Strictly my opinion, when I observed two photographs proposed by the developer, side by side, one of the garage and one of the four-story building usurping the skyscape and top 10,000-plus square feet, a smaller parcel than the Adams Birthplaces. Attending two community meetings relating to this project to address variances being considered, it was clear there was neighborhood concern and recommendations to adapt the proposed plans to a more acceptable and conducive development project. The developer represented by council did not address the major request of those community meetings to reduce the height of the proposed building. We were optimistic. That request remains a high priority, and I, like other community members, have expressed a willingness to offer recommendations for reasonable accommodation for an agreeable development project. This is so important. I'm here representing the birthplaces. I'm not representing, you know, the ward. We have a ward counselor who's doing that. But I attended those meetings, and I'm just a messenger advocating for their concerns as well. The concerns I heard and bring forward are as follows. We ask the developer to consider all possibilities, both residential and commercial, options for development of this property before a decision is made to develop. Why? Because, as I said earlier, in perpetuity, the decision is going to be very important to that lifetime community ahead of us. If a condominium is the best option, so be it. That's not a problem. But we want to consider reducing the height from four to three stories. Why? Because the four stories really impacts our skyscape, our vision and how we look forward. And from the birthplaces, you're, it's almost an arms-length, you almost feel like you can reach out and touch it. And to have that tower before us changes the whole dynamic of the community. This has been an ongoing recommendation of the community that has not been addressed since the initial, initial community meeting. We ask that the, they consider expanding the setback for this structure more than two feet. It just seems to be on top of the sidewalk with no real people space, no pedestrian space, and safety is a real critical issue in that community and all communities throughout Quincy. We know that. We see the accident reports. We want to avoid that. The other thing is open space. There is limited open space surrounding that structure, and parking is inadequate. You know, there's a real parking problem for the National Park Service. We have a transportation program. We have two trolleys. We move visitors throughout the city, thousands of visitors, because we understand there's a parking problem and there's navigation issues, and we want to lessen that as much as possible. But where are people from the National Park Service who are going to be coming here in 2026, who are going to be experiencing the 20th or 50th anniversary of the Revolutionary War? Where are they going to park? And where's McKay's Restaurant going to park? Everybody's out for, you know, finding a parking space. So I think we have to look at the parking relating to this project. Also, I'm not so convinced that there's enough handicap parking within this community of development, so that should be considered. The traffic flow and safety must be considered, and especially maybe now is the time to explore ways we can expand the sidewalk surrounding the Adams Birthplaces so that we have pedestrian and visitor safety with the traffic going by in very many different directions. Presently, the open space within this community for the dogs, I saw it flip-flop to the snow and ice removals, so it means you can't walk your dogs in the winter because it's being used for snow and ice removal, or you can't put them in the walking area. So I'd want to revisit that for residents' convenience. The other thing is the dumpsters. Somebody mentioned those. You know, they're noisy. It's not the dumpsters so much, but it's the, the big monster truck that comes and picks up the waste and, you know, cleans it out and removes it and brings things back. And that can be very disruptive to a neighborhood. In addition, what about the rooftop, the electrical systems? What is going to be exposed at the roof so it's visible to the surrounding community and the neighbors? And what kind of systems are going to house connectivity antennas? And will they be allowed? The developer, last evening at their community meeting, the developer, the legal counsel, and our ward counselor suggested the developer could work or would work with the community and asked if the community would accept reduced height and increased setback, that's green open space someone mentioned earlier, and perhaps some architectural design changes so that it would blend more into the environment. And they seemed very willing to do that, and the community appeared to be in favor. So I encourage that open communication so that there could be a blending of compromise, you know, for this project. I'm concerned for the underground natural water that everybody tells me. We have water in the basements at the birthplaces. We've mitigated that. It was very expensive and difficult, but we watch it dearly because we're preserving those historic resources. But people are saying there's a problem, and once they dig out, I don't know if they're going to do it, but they talked about digging out a foundation. And if they dig out a foundation for storage bins underground, is that going to disrupt the natural water flow? Now, I contacted Heatherless in the city, and I also contacted the Conservation Commission, but they were unable to tell me if there were any natural bodies of water that might flow and impact the soil in that area. I'm not only interested for this developer, because I don't want him to develop and end up with big problems, I'm interested for us as well and for the neighborhood. There's an HVAC program. This building is going to require electrical systems, electrical systems for HVAC and other sources and resources. They're very noisy. There's a humdrum, you can hear it right now, that we kind of learn to live with, but overall, is that going to be disturbing to the neighbors? And are they managing, you know, the, what they have to have and what they don't have to have? Also, let's see, will the building have a foundation? They did talk about redoing the commercial use and taking that out and putting in a foyer and putting in an extra bedroom for a larger condominium. And then they were going to have storage bins in one area. So does that mean there's no foundation to the building, or they'll have to build a foundation? I don't know. But that's, that could impact the environment. And let's see, I'm serious about how the building will relate to the community, okay? And what is that going to look like? And if you happen to look up into this, you know, beautiful sky of ours, and you see the different colorations and how these different historic sites relate to them and how these new developments relate to our skyscape, I think that's a perfect opportunity, because when you look out, you see, you don't want to see a brick wall, you know, four stories high. You want to have an overall vision. And I think in the end, it would complement the National Historic District and the other surrounding buildings and neighborhoods within the community. That's a lot, but I thought it needed to be said, and I think it's important that you know that there is support here and there is a community of concern and interest, and they really want to look to better their neighborhood and have a voice. So I really hope you'll take them into consideration, both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 97 Goddard Street. I've been there since 1968. So I've really enjoyed the beauty of the neighborhood, as well as the Adams houses. And I just, I'm not going to, she said it all. Only one thing that came up during the January meeting, and it was about the brick on this building. And I find it interesting that the developer said to me, as well as the architect, that Quincy required them to do brick. So I just wanted to put that out there, just in case it's not something that's factual that Quincy would insist that the building had to be brick. Also, if you look at the other condos that are going up, there are mix, there are wood, clapboard, whatever it is, the site. But if you're looking at the Adams houses and their wooden houses, their historic houses, I would hope you would put something that would be complimentary to it, that we all can enjoy looking at it. So I just wanted to let you know that, and maybe if you take a ride down our area, and really look at the area that they're planning to build this on, and what, and imagine that building there, and then look at the Adams houses and the businesses that are surrounding, that try to complement, they've been there forever. And we do need a nut lift or a facelift, but let's make it right. Just don't rush into a decision and put something in place to satisfy a developer. But just make sure it satisfies also the community that's lived there, the people who live there and have to, and have to experience the differences and the changes that we have to adapt to. Thank you.
Chris Ely, 19 North Payne Street. I'd just like to say that I am not in favor of this. Anyone else? Counselor?
Good evening, Chairwoman Elin and board members. Richard Ash, Ward 2 City Counselor, 14 Mountain Street. I have hosted with the assistance of Ward 4 Counselor Jim Devine and Ward 5 Counselor Dan Minton. This property is, I'm sure most of you know, sits in two, but it's one street. If you're looking straight at it from Mr. Sweeney's, one street to the right is Ward 4, and then behind you, actually, Mr. Sweeney's residence is Ward 5. So you've, you've got quite a few of us involved, so I do want to mention that. Our first community meeting was on January 18th. About 75 people showed up to that, believe it or not. And then our second community meeting was last night with about 45 people. I will start off by saying that the majority of the residents don't disagree at all that this, that this parcel should be developed. The two things that you heard that will carry into my narrative are the size and the setback. But in order to understand the position, we have to think about the ongoing issues in the neighborhood that include but are not limited to parking and flooding. In addition to an abundance of vehicles at each home, which increase seemingly by the day for a lot of us in our neighborhoods, and small or narrow side streets off of Franklin and Independence, residents also have to deal with sometimes employees of John Adams Nursing Home and commuters who park on the side streets to walk to the John, to the Quincy Adams T-Station. There is also a major flooding issue with water tables. I don't necessarily know where it started. Some may think it's the last five years or so, and the residents are concerned with how this project could, could impact the flooding that they are getting in their basements. Neighbors, as you all know, are Mr. Richard Sweeney, a well-respected local businessman and funeral homeowner. The Adams houses, you just heard from Mary Ann Peake and Mr. Sweeney, and I certainly restate their concerns. This, this building could potentially overpower both of those institutions. Residents in January brought up shade studies, traffic studies, lack of green space, lack of parking, of course, the height and look of the building, and the lack of setback as the major issues that would prohibit their stamp of approval. Also, side note was that if the construction is ongoing next year with Quincy 400, how that impacts, how that impacts things. The developer got rid of one commercial unit, added some parking inside on the first floor of the building. Now there are nine units, one being two stories and a couple feet of green space. It's my understanding that there won't be a need for parking relief at this stage, although I did want to ask a question, because Attorney Foley, did you say there was one unit that was three bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was nine units, two bedrooms, which would be, but that's, we can discuss that after. Last night at the continued community meeting, which I thank the developer and his representative for agreeing to, we made some headway on a few issues, namely that the building would be owner-occupied condominiums, at least per the first iteration of the master deed. Mr. Chella mentioned that he has in the past promoted transit options by giving monetary incentives to unit owners that do not need a parking space, so I would like to see that through as well. A couple of small steps in the right direction. Residents also think that the building could be more aesthetically in line with the neighborhood. The recommendation of maybe a stone wall could, could potentially help the lack of setback, too, if, if that's what is actually proposed and sought at the zoning board. I'm not persuaded by the traffic study cited. I've had meetings with our own traffic department regarding this intersection and ideas to enhance it. I think we first need to know if there are any plans coming down the line for this intersection from our traffic department before trying to figure out if this building is going to, going to fit there. That does dictate the next step. Again, I, I thank the developer and his representative, everybody that's participated in these meetings. I don't think it will come as a shock to anyone here that the building is still at least one floor too high and needs to be setback more. Thank you.
So anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone else? No? Okay. So I have four.
So I have four comment letters to read into the record. The first is from Cindy Brandy, a message 10 Independence Ave, Quincy Mass development proposal. In reviewing the revised architectural drawings, why does the documentation keep referencing nine units when clearly there are 10 residential units? One on the first floor and three on each floor, three each on floors two, three, and four. Also, there appears to be two three-bedroom units, not one. The third floor drawing shows three two-bedroom units, and the typical upper story drawing for floors two and four clearly shows a one three-bedroom and two two-bedroom units. This would mean two units are three bedrooms. The calculations for how much green space and lot size are all done for a nine-unit development, and yet this is a 10-unit development. I do not see any reference to a set aside for affordable housing, which is needed when developing 10 units or more. In addition to this proposal being even denser than the first one, the developer has not done anything to address the concerns raised in community meetings and prior public meetings about setbacks from the sidewalk. This remains a proposal that is much too dense and at least one story too high for the neighborhood. Despite the comments made by the developer, there are no similarly dense build-outs in the immediate vicinity. The fact that the developer hasn't listened to community feedback and appears to be trying to hide the true scope of his plans, or else he wouldn't, he can't count to 10, means this proposal should be sent back for significant revision or rejected outright. The second is from Sandra Antonellis. Dear sirs, I am and have been a resident of 56 Dale Ave, Quincy for 40 years. I have attended two community meetings regarding the proposed building of condominiums at 10 Independence Avenue. I am strongly opposed to this project. It is entirely too large and not in keeping with our area. Everything about it is unsuitable. I respectfully request that you deny the developer's variance requests. The parcel, I believe, has a 25-foot setback. The developer is allocating one and a half feet with four stories and nine units. Traffic is already challenging. This will be a nightmare and not in keeping with our historic district. There is no provision for merchants' deliveries to the units. Where do they propose to park? Thank you for your consideration. This one is from Maggie Sheen. Hello, Mr. Fassies. I write to oppose the redevelopment proposal for 10 Independence Ave that the planning board will discuss this evening. That proposal calls for a four-story structure with nine condominiums and 21 parking spaces. While I agree that the corner should be redeveloped, I have significant concerns about the existing plan. One, this area of Quincy doesn't need a new condo building. Affordable one or two family houses are better. Two, if the condo proposal must move forward, it should be no taller than three stories. Two would be ideal. Three, the current design has the building sink far too close to the street, should be set back, set much farther back. Four, the proposal has traffic entering the building's parking area from Independence Ave and exiting onto Franklin Ave. Traffic at this intersection is already dangerous. This would make it worse. Five, the modified Second French Empire architectural style clashes with the rest of the area and particularly with the historic Adams birthplace's aesthetic. I chose to live in this area of Quincy 18 years ago because of its neighborly community field. The proposal now before the planning board will change that. I hope you will consider all of its potential impacts. And finally, from Janet McDonald to Quincy's planning board. My husband Ron and I want to voice our opposition to this building as it is as of last night's neighborhood meeting. Even if it was reduced to three stories, it is still too big and too industrial-looking. It does not fit in with the neighboring buildings in this historic part of Quincy. Thank you, Janet Smith and Ronald McDonald. Okay, right. So I don't know, Attorney Foley, if you want to respond to any of the comments, or, I mean, I think it's clear we'll need a continuance.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So how long are we looking out for the continuance?
It's month, June.
One month.
One month?
June 26th.
Okay. And that gives sufficient time for the continuance.
Yeah, we should be fine now, Jeff.
Is there, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Thank you. Yes. No?
Yes, we'll take a quick five minutes.
Okay, we'll take a quick five-minute break. Okay, so we are back. The next item on the agenda is Public Hearing Council Order Number 2024-039, Quincy Center Urban Revitalization and Development Plan Amendment Number Six. This public hearing shall be conducted for the purpose of providing the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed sixth amendment to the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District Plan to be filed pursuant to General Law Chapter 121b, Section 48. Once endorsed by the planning board and adopted by the city council, the Quincy Center Urban Redevelopment Plan Amendment Number Six will be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for final approval. Mr. Sweeney?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the board. We're excited to bring in front of you the sixth amendment to the Quincy Center Urban Renewal Plan. As in the past, this board plays a role with urban renewal, both in the plans, having to review them and endorse them through a series of findings. I believe a draft finding document was, was provided to you in your packets. But this board also plays a role in Quincy Center with carrying out those actions. This board is designated as the Certificate of Consistency Designating Authority, which is essentially the special permitting authority as projects are come forward. Most recently, this board reviewed and approved a new mixed-use development down in the Ross Garage area to bring a specialty grocer, as well as new housing units, as well as a public parking garage. So for tonight, we have asked the city's longtime urban renewal consultant, BSC Group. We've got Jeff Fasscher, who's Vice President. He's been with this plan and, and working with the city since its original adoption in 2007. And, you know, one of the reasons for this amendment is they are 20-year plans. We're in year 17, and we're here looking to ask this board for an endorsement and also, you know, the city council for its approval to extend the life of the plan 20 years to 2047. And we're also looking to expand the boundary in a, in a number of different areas. And now, before I jump too much further, I do want to pivot over to Jeff. He has provided a PowerPoint presentation. It's similar to the one received by the council a few weeks back, and we'll have an opportunity to ask some questions afterwards and then open it up for public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Again, I'm Jeff Fasser with the BSC Group located at 803 Summer Street in Boston. And as Rob said...
And I'm sorry, I'm going to introduce one more thought.
Okay.
Excuse me. For this meeting and as well as a public hearing that's been advertised and scheduled at the city council for Monday night, we have secured translation services, both Mandarin, Cantonese, and Vietnamese. If anyone is here in the audience that needs help to understand or needs help to come up and provide comments, we have folks in the back room that can assist with that. So with that, thank you, Jeff. Sorry for interrupting.
No problem. As Rob said, I've been fortunate to work with the city and help support urban revitalization efforts in Quincy Center, and obviously, we've seen a lot of success, and Amendment Six is building upon that success. So first of all, why are we here tonight? Mass general law, first of all, the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization Development Plan is an urban renewal plan that has been approved locally as well as by the state. As an urban renewal plan, and any major amendment, which this is considered a major amendment number six, the planning board must make a determination that the plan is based on a local survey and conforms with any existing planning documents. By survey, they mean more like existing conditions, what's out there now, what type of planning documents have been developed for this area in the past, and to make sure the urban renewal plan is consistent with those prior plans that have been prepared for this particular part of the city. So your specific role is to review the boundary expansion that we're going to be presenting to you tonight and to make a finding that the plan does indeed still conform with prior and current plans for downtown Quincy, the Quincy Center. Some of those plans, that the original plan was built upon back when it was approved in 2007, as well as some more recent plans. First of all, there was a Quincy Center Vision Plan that included this part of the city, Quincy Center. There was new downtown zoning that was developed that kind of came out of that vision plan, so new zoning for Quincy Center. There were design guidelines prepared for Quincy Center, which are still being used today. Then there was the original urban renewal plan that started in 2005, approved by the state in 2007. There have been amendments, actually, one through five, that have been approved. There have been ongoing plans to improve circulation system in downtown Quincy, and there's also been plans, and still ongoing plans, to improve the stormwater system in downtown Quincy, as well as another, a number of other utilities in Quincy Center. The, I want to give a brief overview of where we've been and bring us to current date and then talk about the elements of the Amendment Number Six. So the original plan was developed, as was said, and approved back in 2007, and you see the area outlined in red of the current conditions when the plan was initially prepared. And the main emphasis was to redevelop two city-owned parcels in downtown. The Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area, again, these are larger, large pieces of land in downtown. The desire was to consolidate parking in a parking structure or integral to new development that was to take place and transpose those parking areas into mixed-use development with parking, supporting that development, not areas devoted solely to parking. The plan on the right shows in those beige colors some of the buildings that were proposed we built in the Hancock area as well as the Ross Garage area. That was just a concept, as a starting point of what could happen in those parcels. Also, the original plan had certain objectives that are still, goals and objectives that are still relevant today. They've been relevant since the plan was initially approved in 2007. First of all, making downtown Quincy more of a mixed-use destination. By mixed-use, we mean residential, we mean commercial, we mean retail, open space, a variety of uses downtown to make it a more vibrant downtown. Place of celebration and community, this is building off the history of downtown, the history of Quincy, the number of historic facilities and features in downtown, the character and look of downtown, open space in downtown, really building upon those characteristics. A place of sustainable development, and this is where mixed-use development comes in so that certain buildings or lots are not dependent on one particular use. There are a variety of uses happening that play off of each other, such as more housing downtown creates more of a demand for retail and services downtown, and they feed off of each other. And then certainly a multimodal destination. Quincy has a number of T-stops, as you know, and is a great community when it comes to transit-oriented development. And certainly Quincy Center with, close to the Quincy Center T-Station is a prime area for a multimodal development in downtown so that people have a variety of ways to get around, whether it be vehicle, walking, which included pedestrian improvements downtown, bicycle, as well as use of mass transit. Soon after the original urban renewal plan was approved, the city entered into a development agreement, what's called a master development agreement, with one developer who was proposing to develop the Hancock and Ross Garage areas consistent with the vision of the original urban renewal plan, but also looking to develop other areas within Quincy Center that either were underutilized, in need of upgrades, maybe buildings that had outlived their, their original use and needed to be either torn down and rebuilt for modern services and things such as that. So you'll see on the left diagram here that master developer, Streetworks, proposed a number of new buildings downtown, and the city was supportive of this. It was consistent with the vision for the urban renewal area. Then, and there was a third amendment, which expanded the urban renewal area. You'll see in the map, the red area was expanded slightly north to include the Quincy Center T-Station area. Around this time, it was determined that the garage at the T-Station needed to be demolished and that the T was looking at redeveloping that area for mixed-use as part of redeveloping kind of the footprint of what used to be the garage. So the city expanded the boundary so they could be supportive of that action with utility improvements, circulation improvements, whatever may be needed to help support a redevelopment there, again, that was consistent with the original plan. Amendment four then came along, and unfortunately, the city had to dissolve its agreement with Streetworks, the original master developer. They were not able to meet certain deadlines and pull together the financing to move that project forward, so the city severed the agreement with them. And then, then, then the city became the master developer, which I'll get to in a minute. But their master development approach was then advised by a company called Redgate Real Estate, a large real estate development firm that also has a real estate advising component to it. And they came in and looked at downtown. Market conditions may have changed a bit, and they provided new recommendations for what could happen in the Quincy Center area. I'm going to take my water that Mr. Fassies provided, but he knew, he knew what to do. So as a master developer, the city can now coordinate development, not only in the Hancock Lot and Ross Garage, but also could help developers in other parcels downtown as appropriate to help move development along again, consistent with the original vision and urban renewal plan. Again, with a focus on the Hancock Lot and the Ross Garage area, we've all seen Hancock Lot being redeveloped with new housing, retail, public parking garage, and the public open space, Kerway Square, again, all consistent with the original goals and objectives. And also with Amendment Five, we consolidated all the prior amendments into one document because as amendments were prepared, they were like, here's the original document, and here's Amendment One, here's Amendment Two, here's Amendment Three. So they all brought into one document at that point. And there were other actions added for the Quincy Center, some additional, proposed acquisitions, kind of expansion of open space opportunities, et cetera. So now we're talking about Amendment Six. So hopefully that brings us quickly up to speed, and we now can jump on to Amendment Six. And what we're talking about in Amendment Six and presenting to you are those things that you can see are being proposed that are consistent with prior plans and recommendations for the vision for Quincy Center. So we have four expansion areas I'm going to be discussing in a minute. They're outlined here in pink. And then also updating, the plan also updates the development program for the Ross Garage area, projects that you've seen and approved. Rob mentioned we want to extend the plan, the life of the plan for 20 years. That's more of information for you. Your role is to approve the boundary change and that's consistent. And also an updated financial plan. Again, that's not part of what you're approved tonight, but the plan does include an updated financial plan to show how these different public actions can be supported. So the first area I want to talk about is the Ross Garage area. And again, you're familiar with the projects that are proposed for here, but we brought those projects into the urban renewal plan because we now have up-to-date information of what will we develop there between the medical office building, the housing and commercial retail area and the parking associated with that. So that's been bundled into the plan. This is the first expansion area I want to talk about. This, if you, from the Ross Garage area, jump across Bergen Parkway. This is the area between Bergen Parkway and Granite Street, Star Market to the south, PJ Maxx to the north, large surface parking lots. Again, the vision for downtown is to redevelop those large parking areas, multi-use redevelopment. And what is being contemplated for this area is new development with housing, retail, maybe a little bit of commercial, parking that is included within the footprints of buildings or in very close proximity, not large parking lots. Again, market conditions indicate that this type of development could be invested in. Developers would be willing to invest in this type of development. It may not look exactly like this, but we're talking about more square footage, more uses, less open parking lots, and some additional green space in this area here. So that's the first expansion area. Again, jumping back across Bergen Parkway, but south of Ross Garage, this is the area on School Street area. It's basically, again, Bergen Parkway to the left, Walter Hannan Parkway on the north side, and then School Street on the south side up to Mechanic. Again, Petco's in this area, some other businesses. And again, this is a diagram of what we think the market might be looking to do in this area, and the city's role would be to facilitate that, again, with circulation improvements, utility improvements, stormwater improvements, maybe an acquisition in a couple of parcels if necessary, but the city tries to stay away from acquisitions and hope the private enterprise can... from acquisitions, and hope the private enterprise can take care of those and redevelop what isn't, again, consistent with the vision. Moving a little further to the east, this large square area is where the current courthouse is, the state is proposing to rebuild that courthouse and have a judicial center here, so more of a regional facility that will draw more people into Quincy Center, both employees as well as people using the courthouse, and as part of that redevelopment of that, which the state would do, the city wants to be prepared to support that, if necessary, because again, that type of use and bringing new activity downtown is part of the goal of the Quincy Center. Now, a little further up on this, a little further east, is what we're calling additional Town Brook stormwater flood control improvements, so those will be more infrastructure improvements there, you can see the blue indicating where there may be additional daylighting of the Town Brook, and associated improvements in that area. Now, jumping over to the Quincy Center T-Station, again, as we know, nothing has been developed there yet, there have been some ideas and some plans, the T. still wants to see mixed-use development there, and moving ahead with either finalizing a deal with someone, or maybe re-advertising it, but still with the same goals of the original plan, and that is again, mixed-use redevelopment, parking within the development program itself, still serving the T-Station, and all the intermodal circulation, public transit functions there also. So again, this is more state action, but the city is here to help support it, there may be some access improvements and other things that need to be done to help with that project. And a couple outlining parcels that the city thinks are, might be better use for them, but again, it kind of all has to work together as a package with the state's plans. And then finally, moving a little further north, this is the area that has been proposed for a new Adams Presidential Center, this is between, well, the T. rail line runs through the middle of this, on the left side, you've got the green space that's there now, on the right side, up to Adams Street, is this triangular piece of land with a little parcel across the street, again, where the city wants to be in a position to help with the development of the Presidential Center on that site. It's a private initiative, but again, there may need to be infrastructure improvements, parking improvements, and other things that the city could step in and help with, and work directly with the developer through the approval of an urban renewal plan, because that's one of the benefits of an urban renewal plan, the city can then work directly with developers, as long as there's an economic development and community benefit to the project. So that's what I want to talk about for expansions, and again, just remind you that your action tonight is to look at this plan, see if the boundary expansions make sense to you, and also see, hopefully get your opinion that these expansions and what's being proposed within them is consistent with other plans for the area, as well as the original urban renewal development plan. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Very informative, very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, this is a public hearing, so we will be taking public comment, if anybody would like to come up and comment on this, and also sign in, yes. Oh, ma'am. Yes.
Any more questions than concerns? It looks like there's a lot of-
Could you just, um, provide your name? Yes, no, this is fine.
Cindy Brandy, fifty-two Independence at Quincy.
Thank you.
Um, just, I'm concerned about the amount of commercial property that's being taken that might be generating taxes, and just, it, it just concerns me, because it's come out in the newspaper that there's going to be at least a ten, maybe twelve-year period where the income from the DIF is going to be less than the bond allotment, and if we're taking more tax-paying or tax-producing properties off the rolls, will that make that worse? You know, I'm not, I went to sign in, I realized, I don't know if I'm for or against this, I haven't made up my mind, it's just, I'm concerned that we are targeting things like Acapulco's, Planet Fitness, the ice cream stores by Star Market, all of those are currently producing taxes that this city collects, and are we shooting ourselves in the foot by taking out tax-producing for how long? You know, is this going to take thirteen years to develop? That's all, so just questions that we need to look finance-wise on these things.
Great, and I know when we were provided the presentation, it was, you know, say that the financial plan's not before us, so Rob, if you could, Mr. Stevens, provide some clarification on that piece, would that be helpful, on the diff as well that was referenced?
Yeah, on, on the financial plan?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Yes, Madam Chair, through you to the board. What is, the city has benefited from the use of the Quincy Center District Improvement Financing Program, it's Chapter Forty-Q adopted by the state back in the early 2000s. We have used it since the beginning, it's been paired with urban renewal all along the way. We've had four bond authorizations thus far, it has gone towards a tremendous amount of subsurface infrastructure, surface infrastructure, it's funded the Kilroy Garage, the city, in addition to diff funding, has also pursued a number of state and federal grant opportunities, probably close to, it's, it's, it's well north of fifty million in, in state and federal grants we've gotten, will continue to do so, pursue federal and state grant opportunities. But what's before the council, along with Amendment Six, is the fifth bond authorization, it's a hundred and fifty-seven million dollar request, of that, more than a hundred and thirty is going directly towards the construction of the two garages in the Ross Garage area. From there, in this plan, because it's extended twenty years, we had to go forward and do some future projections, but as far as actions to go with the money, the city would need to finance those with a future diff request. Jeff, do you have any comments? I see that as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, as Rob mentioned, the financial plan is not part of your approval, but what I do want to address as part of her question was the development sequence of things. Again, the plan was proposed to be extended for twenty years, areas that were mentioned, just as an example, you know, the ice cream shop, other areas over there, the thought is those will be redeveloped through private means, so not through city action, so the city isn't proposing to take parcels of land and let them sit for thirteen years before they're redeveloped. It would be developer coming in, working with the landowner, or maybe the landowner themselves as a developer, and once they come up with a plan that makes sense to them, and gets all the local approvals, then they would begin with the redevelopment process, which, you know, they want to get through that as quickly as possible, so they can start getting revenue on their new buildings. So, we don't expect parcels are going to sit vacant with no tax revenue for any extended period of time, it would just be that period of time when property, buildings may be removed and new buildings constructed.
I got one other final point to add to Jeff, which would be that diff five authorization in front of the city council, it contains funding, funding requests for one acquisition, which would be the Acapulco's Restaurant, so there are a number of acquisition of parcels identified in this plan, however, that would need subsequent legislation to come forward with taking orders and financing to carry most of them out, other than the one Acapulco's Restaurant, that site has been identified in the current diff request.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi. My name's Elise McCarthy, I practiced dermatology at thirty-six Adams Street for twenty-nine years, in a building that was the home of the Jeremiah, Jeremiah McInerney, the attorney, local attorney for the Sacco and Bensetti case, and our building has been there since nineteen eighteen. I joined my father-in-law's practice in nineteen ninety-five, and have been happily seeing patients ever since, so I have several questions. First, it's going to be absolutely heartbreaking for me, having worked beside my father-in-law, who had been there since nineteen fifty-five, to see our building just demolished, and that's a, the personal communication, that's what's going to happen, I said, I asked, what will happen to our building, will it get flattened, and was told, yes. So that really makes me sad, and I think my father-in-law would roll over in his grave after seeing patients for fifty-five years there, or sixty-five. My questions are, I have three main questions, why does this project have to be so big for the Adams Presidential Library? You've already bought the building at eight Adams Street, not the land, I know that's eminent domain, is under, under whatever controversy, you've got, you've bought twenty-four and twenty-six Adams Street, why can't the Presidential Library project be built on those parcels? I don't know why you have to take the, the entire Adams Street corridor, it just seems way too big, and we have patients, and I have Northeastern co-op students that come in on the red line, and I'm probably just going to have to leave the city. So that's one question. Second question, it's not my bailiwick, but is this the best time economically? Municipal bonds are at three percent and diving down, the district improvement financing ends in twenty thirty-seven, or maybe it's getting extended, but you're kicking the can down the road, and eventually, the taxpayers are going to get stuck with this. So if you have a project like the Adams Presidential Library that goes over, you can bankrupt the city, so I, I don't know if this is the best time to be doing such a grand project. Thirdly, again, not my bailiwick, but healthcare is, I was on staff at Quincy Hospital, which is now a gazillion luxury apartments, and I, if there's all this money sloshing around, I think you truly be serving the residents of Quincy a favor to have an inpatient facility, not Milton Hospital outpatient. If you have chest pain, if you have trauma in the city of a hundred and one thousand people, you're out of luck, you have to go to South Shore Hospital, which is swamp or the other, so the luxury apartments where Quincy Hospital was aren't cutting it, so I just, just a plea to stop overdeveloping the city, it's a great city, do a small library project, we don't have the books, we don't, the Adams Academy is not clearly owned, it's, as JC said, it's not, so I'm just really confused by these grandiose projects, when they're not really helping the residents of Quincy. I don't know who's going to use this Adams Presidential Center for, without books, because the books are at the Boston Public Library, for civic studies, I mean, where's your revenue coming back for this? So, I mean, we're a little practiced, but you know, we see skin cancer patients, and I really am going to be sad when our building gets flipped. So that's all I have to say, but anyway. Thank you. Yes.
My name's Rob Haley, I live at seventy-five Elmwood Park, and I'm opposed to this new plan, I'm opposed to the project, taxpayers can't afford it. The mayor submitted a council order two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-eight on April first, two thousand twenty-four, to the city council, for a bond authorization of a hundred and fifty-seven million, for district financing for the city of Quincy. The diff, you know, as they explained to you, was set up in two thousand and thirty-seven, at that time, the projected cost of the project was fifty-nine million dollars, and there's an expiration date of two thousand and thirty-seven, there's no extension on that two thousand and thirty-seven, the law is what the law is, so the city's not getting an extension on that, and clearly, the city's past that now, they're going up to two thousand and sixty-three. So since two thousand and seven, the city council has authorized four bond authorizations, totaling two hundred and twenty-four billion dollars in diff financing for the downtown redevelopment project. On April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the municipal finance department presented information to the city council on the amendment on a financing package for the proposal. The report presented in the, in part states, "Diff is a locally enacted tool that enables a municipality to identify and capture incremental tax revenue from new private investment in a specific area and direct them towards public improvements and economic development projects." The report states Quincy has utilized this tool to a great success in the downtown. The report, which is part of this report here, shows two hundred and thirty-six billion in approved spending with ninety percent in short-term debt. Now, when you have short-term debt, you pay interest only, you don't pay any of the principal back, so none of the principal on the approved short-term debt has been paid back, and there's no funding schedule for it. Also, it says, "The new diff debt, if you approve the one fifty-seven, will be three hundred and ninety-three million point eight, once the one fifty-seven is approved." The overview, overview of expenses and revenue under the diff report shows these numbers from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year sixty-three. Now, let's get serious, the project started in two thousand and seven, so we're talking fifty-six years later, does this seem like a good deal for anybody? Doesn't seem like a good deal to me, but regardless of that, basically, you're probably saying to yourself, "How can that be? I thought the diff ends in two thousand and thirty-seven," and I actually missed that when I was reading that the first time, so I had to go back and take a look at it. The last sentence in your report says, "The downtown Quincy redevelopment pays for itself." This is the same line the mayor and the city officials have been using for years, it's not true, but it sounds good. The Ross Lot redevelopment package dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, shows a spreadsheet with the combined costs for the two garages from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand and sixty-three. The amount is three hundred and nineteen million dollars, more than double the original proposal of a hundred and fifty-seven million. Because I worked in municipal finance for thirty-seven years, including many years as municipal treasurer, I was pretty sure that a forty-year debt schedule wasn't allowed to bond municipal projects. So basically, I went ahead and I sent an email to Dave McCarthy after the meeting, and basically, he said, "Hey, the schedules look great here, but they're all wrong." Well, little did I know that I was wrong, because the city of Quincy, the following day, Eric Mason, the finance director, received an email from attorney Rick Manley of the city's bond firm, in regards to borrowing term for the proposed garage bonds. The city had filed and got special legislation in two thousand and eleven, Chapter Thirty-two, Acts of two thousand and eleven, that allows the city to borrow short-term for ten years for the downtown, and thirty years for long-term for the downtown. This was done four years into the diff, and the legislation names Hancock Adams Associates, AKA Streetworks. This was such a good idea that when Streetworks was terminated from the project, the city filed to amend the legislation in two thousand and sixteen, Chapter Three Fifty-Five, Acts of two sixteen, which now allows a designated redevelopment to do the same thing. So here we are, discussing the Sixth Amendment to the city's plan, and another diff bond authorization, so what do we know? We know the bonding schedule for the hundred and fifty-seven million will cost three hundred and nineteen million. Repayment of the debt will last until two thousand and sixty-three, twenty-six years after the diff expires, so what happens when the diff expires? Basically, you pay from the general fund, that means the taxpayers pay for it, so like I said, there's no extension on the diff, you know, I think at the very least, the city's been disingenuous with the taxpayers and the city council about using diff to finance the downtown redevelopment. The city owes an additional amount of a hundred and ninety-four million in short-term debt. There is no funding schedule of that, no one's ever come up with a funding schedule and said, "Hey, we know how we're going to pay for this." So basically, what happens, if you take what the city's doing with the three hundred and nineteen million dollars, and translate that into a forty-year schedule for the hundred and ninety-four million, you come up with an additional three hundred and eighty-eight million dollars the city needs to come up with. The city's done a permanent bond issue for diff for thirty million dollars, is thirteen million dollars in interest. So if the city council approves the one fifty-seven, basically, what happens is now the city of Quincy owes seven hundred and fifty million dollars, three-quarters of a billion dollars for this downtown that everyone can, says is the do-all, end-all. The original estimate, like I said, was fifty-nine million dollars, and, you know, the taxpayers won't be paying a dime for the project, because they'll be paying millions of dollars. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment?
Bill Zant, South Three Fifty-Six, Washington Street, Quincy. Chair violent, committee board members, I'm not in favor of this project, the key reason is, this dog don't hunt, as my friends in the South would say. I know your responsibility or purview, or whatever your role is, is not financial, you need to consider it to some degree. Let's look at the original footprint, the original project, before we added the train station, before we're talking about what's about to be added, any of that stuff. There has been roughly- There has been roughly 200 million or thereabouts in new construction. There has been some new growth and renovation. Assessments have gone up, everything else. But we're looking at $225 million spent on DIF debt, and probably close to another, getting close to $300 million in total, given grant money and other things coming in, and including, I would include, the Adams grade as part of that. We're at $300 million for 200, new growth, new buildings. Now, as you may or may not know, to do a project like this, you should see about three times the new growth of whatever the municipal spending is. They're talking about going to 400 million. That gets you to a buck, too. We're not there. If you look at what's been built in the original footprint, they've underbuilt. Underbuilt significantly from what Streetworks' plan is. Streetworks was talking much taller buildings. A lot of what's gone in and gone, been built in the area. The only tall building is the O'Connell Building. Everything else is podium and stick, five, six, seven stories. They were talking 10 stories and more dense. It's just not there. Now, if we look at the financing, the administration will tell you they're covering the nut. Well, they are and they aren't. The problem is that they baseline what the downtown area is paying in debt, or paying in tax revenue. And anything incremental above that with a 1% a year elevator clause can be going to paying down debt. So what that means is, the new development downtown isn't kicking much in the way of revenue to cover local services and groundskeeping. Streetworks on groundskeeping, they were talking about having a small, surcharge, special tax district to make sure that the downtown area is being maintained nicely. The mayor's just going to put, it just looks to be that he's putting that in the general fund. If you add in the maintenance costs, which are coming in for groundskeeping, and you add the public services, the local services, that this new project is going to cause to be needed, to be added, they're not being covered. You add that stuff in. We're not looking at 10, 12 years where the project is running in the negative and come back in later. We're talking, we're talking several millions of dollars every year for a long, long time. Next. In terms of the current project for the ground addition, I'll make this real simple. As a policy decision, you should not be including the Adams Museum property, proposed Adams Museum property in place, and as long as the Jalko Quincy matter is unresolved, the city of Quincy is looking at about a $15 to $25 million payout to make that right, to buy the property and pay penalties, damages, and they could get whacked for punitive damages for the way it was handled. Until that is done, you shouldn't touch approving that expansion, because what you're doing is you're setting a policy in place without knowing what the money is. If they want to come back with an amended seven and bring that in, great. Knock yourselves out. That's fine. And in terms of the council side or the narrow side, they need to come up with a better financial plan. That museum, to do it, do it right for the size they're now talking about, put a proper endowment, because it's not going to be self-revenue producing to cover its nut, even if they get a free building. We're talking $200 to $300 million for the, given the scale they're talking about. Now, I'm getting a little drips and drabs tonight that, well, we're thinking about having the city's going to partner up, and we got to discuss parking and everything else. So in other words, what that means is the city of Quincy is going to be on the hook to build a $75 million garage, and God knows what else. You can approve stuff without some basis of a plan for the financing and some of the logic. And you certainly don't want to go against a situation where you've got an ongoing legal dispute that's probably going to take another three years to resolve. This is premature, folks. It should be carried over. It should be delayed. And a final point, just on financing. If we go back to the original ask, can't, give me a little slack, plus or minus $5 million. They asked for $290 million, about $290 million for the DIF financing for the original footprint. They've gone through 224 of that. On the 157 that they're talking about now, what they really should be doing is talking about a $45 million to burn down the 290, and then 112 in a second ask. Otherwise, they're looking at a conditionally approved $45 million that's sitting out there that's not being touched, because it doesn't appear that that's what they're asking for in this tranche. This is crazy, folks. It doesn't work. I know financial's not your thing, but you just can't go down that road because you're making policy statements without an understanding of what we're looking at down the road. A lot of these things are great ideas, but you need, there's a lot more work that needs to be done to get this thing even close to being willing to consider. This is a cocktail napkin done after five rounds of the fours, after a Celtic game win. Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment?
Mary Jo Barza, 18 Clifton Street. So I live right in the middle of where the General's Bridge is. But I just have, I don't have an opinion one way or another as far as the development. But I just wanted to talk about the Acapulco's property, which is part of, and then just go on record for that. According to the article that's in this week's Quincy Sun, it's pretty much a done deal. Every, the mayor has plans and he's got a schedule. I'm just opposed to taking, again, to taking some commercial property for another pocket part, because we have a bunch of them. But if it happens, because it looks like it's a done deal, please consider the ladies. There is no plan in there for any mention of Louisa Catherine Adams, and I don't want to have to go through the same fighting that we did in the Quincy Adams part. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Aunt Andy, 143 Phipps. So I wasn't sure whether I was approved or opposed, listening to this. But listening to some of the people talking about the finances, this is the planning board. I looked at, this was a great presentation, by the way. The original plan had the Hancock Lot and the Ross Lot, and the Ross Lot is not done yet. And this is the Sixth Amendment that's proposed. Now, my job tends to be around IT projects and things, and they always run over. So I understand the running over of a project. But typically, if you've gone to the Sixth Amendment and you haven't done the thing that was on the First Amendment, then you say no to the Sixth Amendment until you sort that out. And the other thing I wanted to say, so I think, I agree with people that say it's premature. From a planning perspective, I don't think you should expand it until the MBTA isn't addressed either. But I just wanted to also mention something that, when I was listening to the presentation, that has kind of bothered me a long way with the, with the urban redevelopment of what's actually happened. And that is that the statement was that it was going to be originally to respect the historical nature while having modern combinations. But we've seen a number of historical facades, et cetera, just torn down. And I was kind of heartbroken listening to this woman talking about this 1918 building that's going to get pulled down. We, I was here originally because of the Ten Independence, where it's across from the birthplaces. This Amendment Six says nothing about the historical nature of things. It's not clear that there would, that that consideration is still out there. But it was the original plan, and we are historical. And having that kind of combination, I think, is important. So I think it's a, it's too big, an expansion. Your job is to think about planning whether the city, the redevelopment should be expanded. I would encourage you to consider saying not yet at this point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this? You can also sign in at the sheets on the side. And I'll ask beginning, what else would like to speak? Okay, so hearing none. I think we can close the public hearing. That makes sense.
I'm about to close.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And does the? Oh, that's a good question. Anybody have any questions or comments? Rob, do you have any recommendations?
Well, you know, I mentioned in my opening remarks, the department did provide a finding. I'd go ahead and read that document, and then we'll go from there. The Quincy Planning Board, at its meeting on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, voted the following. Whereas the Quincy Planning Board is required pursuant to Section 48 of Chapter 121b of the General Laws in Chapter 898 of the Acts of 1973, to reach certain conclusions regarding the Quincy Senate District Urban Revitalization and Development Plan, the plan as submitted to this body, and whereas the project area as identified in the plan remains a decadent area, and whereas the project area would not by private enterprise alone and without either government subsidy or exercise of governmental powers be made available for redevelopment, and whereas the proposed land uses in the building requirements in the URDP, in the URD project area will afford maximum opportunity to privately finance urban renewal and revitalization consistent with the needs of the locality as a whole. Now therefore be, now therefore be it resolved by the Quincy Planning Board that, one, we report to the Director of the Quincy Department of Planning and Community Development, the mayor, and the city council the following. The board has determined that the plan is based on a local survey. And, B, the board has determined that the plan conforms to a comprehensive plan for the locality as a whole. Two, recommends the Quincy City Council and the mayor approve Amendment Six, dated April 1st, 2024, to the Quincy Senate District Urban Revitalization and Development Plan that will expand the URD project area and extend the plan 20 years to expire on April 1st, 2047. Three, recommends the city council authorize the mayor to proceed with urban renewal activities on the city's behalf as set forth in the plan. And four, recommend that upon final approval of Amendment Six by the city council, that the Quincy Department of Planning and Community Development forward said URDP Amendment Six to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for final administrative approvals. So that would be the basis of the findings the board would make.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Concerns, comments? Yes.
So because I'm the new guy here, and I'm just trying to like listen to all this. Are we voting tonight? We don't, we don't do anything in the financial part of it.
No.
It's crap.
So this Amendment Six is just part of a long-term plan going down the road to see what's, what's going to be coming, and it looks like it's going to be very nice. But listening to the, to the neighbors and the different people, I, I think to myself, okay, if you, if you haven't settled the situation that we have with a legal lawsuit going on, then, then do we, because we don't, we don't handle the financial part of it. But if we were handling the financial part of it, would we be saying like, okay, should we take care of like the lawsuits first before we do something like that?
Well, I mean, I would add that, you know, the Adams Presidential Center is one of a handful of activities, we believe, that needs to occur in that area.
Don't misunderstand me. I like it.
Yep. If you noticed on the map, we included a portion of Freedom Park, which is on the other side of the train tracks. There has been discussions with electric providers that some additional substation equipment needs to be cited in that area associated with the T Station development. Another element of the T Station, there is the development to come out of the T Station, but there's also a reorganization of the busway. And we would very much like to see that bus operation occur on the Bergen Parkway side, not down through Hancock Street. Now, in order to do that, you know, there are some conceptual designs that have been developed by the government engineers, and not for the private development, that would bring that busway, you know, as soon as you clear the stop and shop parking garage, you'd go down a level, and then you'd come in at a lower level closer to the train platform and pick up bus passengers. Now, what's tricky is how does that exit? And right now, those conceptual plans have it exiting on Dimick Street. So we see that Dimick Street becoming a pretty important transportation corridor. And there's also this linkage to the Peacefield itself. If anyone's tried to walk up to, you know, you know, the presidential estates, that intersection is outdated. And, you know, we're trying to improve the pedestrian linkage at that intersection. So we've also looked at a few properties that are underutilized over on Hancock Street. So that proposal to expand the district to the north is, does include the Adams Presidential Center, but it includes a number of other activities we've contemplated. So that's, that's sort of my thoughts there. Some of the other areas, prior to adopting urban renewal, the city did adopt the Quincy Center zoning districts in 2005. Tried to deal just with zoning, right? We increased height limits. This board was identified as a special permit rating authority for the Quincy Center districts. So the other expansions to the south to School Street, we're just expanding the urban renewal boundary to, to the full Quincy Center zoning district area. But I would agree, acknowledge that section to the north is outside of the Quincy Center district. We had stopped right at Dimick back in that time. But, you know, back to what I just acknowledged, there are some infrastructure elements that involve the T Station, that involve the rail bed, that involves electrical infrastructure, that involves traffic and pedestrian infrastructure that has the city heading in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? So is there a motion to, I guess we make the findings as recommended for Amendment Six of the Urban Revitalization District Plan?
Motion that we make a positive endorsement of Amendment Six.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so you know this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, there's just one.
Thank you very much.
One business meeting item tonight, and it's the review and determination to endorse deny approval not required plan, 101 McCombe Lane Port is a parking lot.
Great. This is something we discussed last, last month, so here it is here.
Okay. And we do have a meeting in June, so thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yeah.
All in.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.